Okay. We call the meeting for order. Rule call. Danny?
Here.
Damon?
Here.
Kimberly?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
I am also here. Meeting has been properly notified and certified?
Yes.
Thank you. Please join me in the budget allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a volunteer to read the mission statement?
The Mount Horev area school district in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Jeff. Two A, approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Michelle. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the October 3 regular minutes? Motion by Jeff, seconded by Danny. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Did you get that, Jeff?
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Won't you go on to?
Yeah, but I don't think you have to abstain. I don't know.
If you are here, you have to.
I don't think so, but okay, then I abstain as well.
Thank you. Moving on. Approval of the October 22 board workshop minutes.
No stupor.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Kimberly. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
They're abstaining.
Jeff abstains. Number three, addressing the board. School news.
Well, it's been an eventful fall since the last time we visited. Tickets for Shrek the Musical have gone on sale, and I think they're harder to get than World Series tickets right now. Really, I'm excited. It's going to be a great... In fact, if you were over there this evening, you probably saw all the kids getting the sets already. But we had a lockdown drill last week that I think helped us better prepare to ensure the safety and welfare of our students and staff. We asked for the partnership and received the partnership of our Mount Horev area police department. They were very helpful in identifying what are ways in which we can improve our practice, and we're going to be debriefing with that. That came along with Unity Day. Have you heard about Unity Day? This was a day in which everybody was encouraged to wear orange in order to support anti-bolting initiatives and efforts in our schools. And we were able to post a lot of pictures on Facebook of kids just celebrating along with their teachers and staff. And I would be remiss if I didn't wish a congratulations to our divisional champions, our volleyball Lady Vikings, and our soccer teams, who will continue their tournament play this Thursday night. I think the details are yet to be kind of ironed out. I heard the girls are maybe traveling to Sauk Prairie for a 7:00 game. May I ask Mike if he's aware of the boys?
Soccer will be here.
Oh, will be here, and also at 7:00?
Yes.
If we're successful in both those bids, then Saturday night is another night of excitement. The place was packed on Saturday night, that gymnasium with the Rockin'. And last but not least, this Saturday night, I'm pleased to announce the DECA group will be hosting their annual haunted house over at the high school. $3 to get in, $5 if you really want to be scared, entry through the atrium. So we're very excited to announce that as well.
Thank you. Any additional school news? Moving on, 3B, citizens' comments. Okay, seeing none. 4A, personnel transactions. Did everybody see there's an addendum as well? Motion by Michelle, seconded by Danny. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Number five, consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull out?
I have a question. Does the youth option applications bring 2017 and boys basketball to Dubuque part of the consent agenda?
It is. You may ask to pull them out if you'd like to discuss something.
No, no, that's... I just want to make sure we're pulling them out. Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Danny, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
As it.
Sure.
As a person who grew up in Dubuque, I hope our Vikings go kick some butt!
Which school did you attend?
Hampstead.
Okay, moving on to number six, discussion items. 6A, WASB Region 12 report. Michelle and Kimberly, which one of you would like to go first?
We already discussed that I would lead that, so I shall do so. That Fall Regional Meeting was October 6 at Stoughton High School, and I think I'd be remiss not to start off by saying that their very own culinary students were the ones who served us dinner, and they came out with their chef attire, and they also prepared the very elegant raspberry dessert. So that was a very great way to look at student achievement for us. Our feature presentation was given by George Stephan, a name that is familiar to you because he also facilitated our Saturday board workshop meeting. The title of his feature presentation was "The Continuous Improvement of School Boards", and his main theme there was accountability. And after his talk, he did ask us as a group from our school board to meet at tables to ponder the following three questions, which I will ask to you as well. What areas or processes do you monitor as a school board? What does your monitoring process look like? And what current board practice stands out as an effective measure of accountability? So those are some things for you to think about, and I suspect we may touch more on them on the staff morale portion of our agenda tonight. Then we had our legislative update. We reviewed the figures that we've been working with already this school year in terms of revenue limits and per pupil aid, with a reminder that in November we'll have more projected figures at the Stevens Point meeting for those interested in attending. And if you cannot, I am attending, so I'm happy to bring back what I learned. And then finally, to close out the session, our executive director, John Ashley, reminded us to keep writing letters and be present at the state level. Michelle, any further comments on this?
That was quite lovely. Thank you.
You are welcome. Very happy to represent, and it was a good meeting, and we, of course, hope that more of you will tag along to the next regional meeting.
It's always very informative at the dinner portion to talk with other board members to learn what they're doing at their districts, and also to share some of the good things that we're doing at our district, in our district, especially the liaisons to the schools. That was something that's, I think, is pretty unique, and so to be able to talk to other board members about how we do that and how important it is is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you both for attending and reporting back to us. Does anybody have any questions for them?
I have one question. Steve said Stevens Point. Do you know the date on that one? November 12.
Okay.
We were lucky enough to have our superintendent with us also. We need to make note of that. Thank you for taking your time.
All right.
Thank you both. 6B, safety and security update.
We've had a great meeting last Wednesday. We're continuing on our march towards that golden time of mid-November to at least begin the piloting of the secured entry buzzer system over at our PC. We finished a letter that's going to be going out to our families and also hopefully asking the local newspaper to include that in their weekly paper so that families and visitors to our school will know of the new protocol that we'll have established. I might ask either Teresa and or David if there's anything you'd like to add. I think we're in a really good spot.
Yeah, preliminary wiring will begin this week at the PC, perform cables and things like that. We're waiting on one piece of equipment. Omni's waiting on one last piece of equipment to show up, and the install will be early next week.
We have our protocols drafted out. We'll be taking those to the administrative council this week for them to come back, go back to the buildings and take a look at the procedures and run through the... It's going to go dry running them, but we also have a list of questions that the administrative council will be working on Wednesday to try to get some final answers for people who have them.
We are very fortunate to have had board member Michaels in attendance at these meetings. Do you have anything that we are missing that would be important for the team?
Just that I think the group is doing a really, really good job of striking a balance between moving ahead with everything in a very thoughtful manner, and yet in a deliberate way to get it done as quickly as possible.
I extend that appreciation to both David and Teresa. You really have done a very nice job of facilitating this discussion.
And the one other thing I would say is just that from one meeting to the next, there's just a lot of progress that's made, so.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you both. Okay, moving on to C, board administration efforts to promote staff morale.
This was a topic that was brought to the board's attention, compliments of board member Dunn. Thank you so much for continuing to keep your finger on the pulse of how we help support our teachers and our staff. And might it be appropriate to begin there?
Oh.
Oh, why not?
I guess it's just we've had surveys repeatedly that say staff morale is an issue. The board has not really addressed it, and so, yes, I wanted it to be an ongoing topic.
Can I help frame it a little bit more? That's okay?
Yes, please.
That's great.
Yes, I didn't really... Go ahead.
Yeah, you're exactly right. Our wellness surveys have shown that our staff has expressed some degree of pause on this topic of the extent to which the board supports our staff and the extent to which the board supports administration. And we have the wellness survey that's about to go out again in its next iteration, and in fact, we've broken that question out separately so that there'll be two separate questions so that we can discern whether or not this is more of a staff issue or if this is more of a level of concern for or support for administration. That being said, I do note that at the time that the survey went out last year was at a time when this board was faced with a very difficult situation in a couple of areas. And the feedback I've heard from multiple players, both in the organization and outside the organization, is how this board has stepped up and really addressed that issue in a very positive and leadership was definitely demonstrated by our board members. Not to mention the fact that we are... We have a different dynamic in our board table now, don't we? We have several new board members. We have a new superintendent, new administrative team, and so we're hopeful that this data that we're going to receive from the next iteration of the survey will help us determine if the needle's been moved in any way in this regard. And if it hasn't, then maybe take some steps to help see what we can do to help that cause. I think your intent, as we talked privately, was that you want the community to know that this is an important topic for our board and for our administration, because when our employees are satisfied, I think our students are even better served. So I don't know if there's any other part of that that maybe you thought would be helpful to capture?
Does anybody have any additional ideas for ways that we can impact staff morale?
A few. Well, one, since the theme of accountability was such a heavy one at a regional meeting. One thing I noticed as a new board member was that at our August meeting, we did require all of the principals to talk about their specific building goals in terms of safety, technology, and academic goals, and they had to give measurable units, figures and metrics to meet. And I kind of expected us to maybe close out that meeting with our own goals. Like, wouldn't it have been nice if we went last as a nice unity measure to say that we too are looking for measurable goals as well? Another opportunity I noticed was at the senior awards night. That was pretty much the first event I attended as a board member, and I was struck by how many students got to walk across the stage to earn their separate cords. And to remind you, that means that they had to serve 140 hours for community service. And I kind of expected us to maybe have an equivalent of like board cords where we had to do service in the schools as well, and have since learned that we do not have any such program. And I know that having that kind of visibility right in the schools with service really demonstrates a good partnership, so we kind of generated a list with Leah spearheading that, and we talked about the homecoming float, so I know that we already have some perhaps shovel-ready projects that we could look at, and I just think that those are going to help foster, especially the board satisfaction piece of what we're hearing of the staff morale part.
Thank you. You're welcome. Steve, I wonder, do you think that the administrative team and the staff would be open to seeing us in the schools more and assisting? I was actually thinking, one of the things that I've seen you do actually was mystery reader. And I thought, well, that's such a neat little program. I wonder if that might be an opportunity for board members?
Yeah. In fact, mystery readers today have the cast of Shrek reading Mrs. Fredrickson's fourth grade class. How great is that?
That's fun.
I think any kind of value-added activity that the board would like to do, we also know that you folks have full-time jobs, and when you're in the middle of doing your work is when we're at school doing our own. And so to the extent to which you can avail yourself, please know, you're always welcome. We love that. I don't know that, my personal opinion is, I don't know that you have to feel as though that there's something more that you have to do, some kind of program or some kind of initiative that you need to do. I think it's the kinds of things you're doing already when you see good things happening, you're recognizing it, you're rewarding it, you're thanking people for their service. You're attending events. I see many of you at ball games and other events helping out, and by attending committee meetings. We just talked about Vice President Michaels and the things that she's done here. Jeff, last Monday night, I think you were here between 4 and like 7 o'clock at night just helping out with committee meetings. Each of you, in your own very special way, offer support to our staff in ways that are immeasurable, and so I don't want you to feel as though that you're not doing that. But if you feel as though there's a value added of some sort, please know, we would always welcome you into our schools and to whatever extent that your schedule will allow for that. Gosh, that would be great.
Thank you.
Can we keep this on the radar maybe, if that's all right?
Absolutely.
Let's look at those results at the conclusion of the winter break. I think that's when we'll get those back and report those out and see if the needle's been moved a little bit.
Will those go to wellness first, or will that work?
Yes.
I wonder if, depending on the results of that committee, you might possibly come up with some additional ideas for ways that we could impact staff morale? And then we could bring it here, and even more ideas could be created that way. And I wonder if staff has any ideas? What they would like to see?
I think that's what I would like to know. What would be meaningful to them?
When does the survey go out?
It goes out in right between Thanksgiving and winter break.
Was it already completed?
I think we could add that question. We did add the question, is there anything you think we should have asked that we didn't ask, and if so, what would that question have been? What would your answer have been? And so we certainly can add in the question to that point, how can we help support?
Would it also be possible for the building administrators at their next staff meeting to just, you know, maybe have an informal discussion about if they think that... That way, you know, they're in private, they're talking amongst themselves, and then, you know, let us know.
One of the other questions we added was how you want to be recognized, and we added in others and did like 140 characters or something like that.
I think it might be appropriate to reach out to our Mount Horev Education Association representatives also and ask them, what are our biggest morale issues, and what are specific actions we can take to address it? I just about talked about mushrooms.
Thank you, everybody. Further discussion on this item? I think we'll be seeing this again in the near future.
Thank you for putting it on the agenda and addressing it.
Okay. We will move on to our action items. 7A, review of budget levy, state aid, equalized value, and fund equity amounts. So I guess we're going to talk first about the adoption of the revised budget for 2016, 2017.
That's right. Board members, there are three items that we're asking the board to please consider tonight. You'll see those motions listed under the action item. These are updated figures, as you'll see in the motions, as a result of our October 15 reports from the state that began to give us a better picture on our equalized value. And so you'll note that in the first motion... This one might not know. Thank you so much, Michelle. You'll note that the revenue that has been collected is in line with the revenue worksheet that was also attached to this item on your agenda and would require a roll call vote. Scott, is there anything more you would like to add to this piece that maybe would be helpful to the board? I know we went to finance committee on Wednesday night and had some detailed discussion. Anything that would be at a high level for the board?
Well, we had a lot of discussion at finance. I'm certainly happy to get as in-depth as you would like, maybe just a couple of things to throw at you as things to consider. There's a couple of supporting documents that are in your board cabinet as well. One of them is a revenue limit comparison, and it compares over the last three years what our revenue limit data looks like. Revenue limit data essentially addresses our student enrollment, it addresses our tax levy, it addresses our state aid, and it addresses our overall mill rate for the upcoming school year. So what you'll find is that we have the 1415 data, we have the 1516 data, but you may recall that the budget was adopted at the annual meeting back in August for 1617. So what I like to look at is the comparison of what the annual meeting revenue limit data was to our actual data now that October 15 has passed. So you'll recall every year in the month of October, as Dr. Slaro mentioned, we get the final data that we need to not only finalize our budget, but finalize our levy and our mill rate. So you'll see a comparison between the annual meeting and what the actual data came in at. One highlight is to show that our mill rate from the annual meeting to tonight is a reduction of 47 cents. That's significant. That's a very positive impact on the data that we received from the state. What that tells us is our equalized value went up over $65 million, which was wonderful. And our enrollment stayed steady, and those two variables allowed the mill rate to decrease from the annual meeting, which is a positive for addition. So that's the revenue limit comparison, and certainly you can go back to the other years as well and do some comparisons. The other supporting document that you'll see is a budget summary, which really goes hand in hand with your first motion tonight, which compares the revenues and expenditures across all of our funds. And you'll find that the general operating budget, the specialized budget, those areas all have a balanced budget. Fund 39, which is our debt service fund, that never is in balance from the standpoint of revenues equalling expenditures. And quite simply, that's because every year we budget our revenues based on our tax levy for debt. That's based on the calendar year 2017, but our expenditures are from 1617, over a half of, you know, 16 and the other half is 17. So revenues and expenditures, you'll always find different. Fund 49 is our referendum account, and we'll be closing that project out fairly soon. So you'll find very limited amounts of revenue in Fund 49 because those funds have already been received, but we're now making all the expenditures to finish up the project. And Fund 50, I do want to point that out. You may recall that DPI is looking for us to increase our expenditures so that we do not have reserves in excess of three months of operating expenses. And so we're in the process of making that happen. If you've been in the high school, you'll see a lot of the new tables and equipment that food service purchased through its budget. And again, the intent of some of those capitalist expenditures is to spend down some of the reserves because the Department of Public Instruction is telling us you need to do that so you don't have in excess of three months of operations in your accounts. So that's... Those are the three funds that you'll find have differences in revenues and expenditures. Everything else remains balanced. Those two supporting documents, the intent is to support the main document, which is the three motions that Dr. Slaro referred to, and then you'll also find some budget adjustments that need to be made based on the revenue limit data that we determined over the last week. Is that enough information for you, or would you like me to go on further detail?
Michelle?
We also have it. I tried to highlight it pretty clearly in our finance minutes from our meeting last Wednesday.
I can make the motion. I move to approve the 201617 revenue budget totaling $32,661,201, and expenditure budget totaling $35,50,595, including all funds.
Second.
Okay, so for the first one, a motion by Michelle, seconded by Jeff. Further discussion?
We did go through this at great length at the finance committee meeting, and Scott explained it all very well, and we're in great shape. We really have very few budget revisions. They're pretty minor. Our enrollment is very steady, so these are really just a few minor tweaks. That's how I characterize it.
I would agree, based on our discussion at finance.
Okay, motion by Michelle, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor say... Sorry, roll call vote. That's right. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Motion passes.
I move to approve the Mount Horev area school district levy in the amount of $12,382,040 in taxes against the property of said district to meet the approved budget for the 201617 school year.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Further discussion?
It's lovely to be able to tell our residents that they will have a mill rate of 9.44 as opposed to the 9.91 that we projected at the annual meeting.
Okay, motion by Michelle, seconded by Leah. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Motion passes. Okay, looking for a motion on the third?
Motion to approve the projected $6,568,627, 41 cents, being 26.41% of the general fund expenditure budget. Is undersigned.
Undersigned.
Undersigned, uh, unbalanced to meet the cash flow needs.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jeff, seconded by Michelle. Further discussion? Motion by Jeff, seconded by Michelle. Roll call vote. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Motion passes. All right. That's it for that one, I think. Thank you, everybody. 7B, consideration of the DECA Central Region Leadership Conference in Indianapolis, Indiana, November 18 through 20.
And in the audience, we're very pleased to have Mr. Michael Cassidy who enlisted today. Michael, as he makes his way down here, is also serving in several roles. One of them is as our educator effectiveness specialist, doing great things on behalf of our staff. But here tonight, you're going to talk about the great things you're doing for students.
Uh, yes, I am. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Michael Cassidy. I'm, I teach business ed over at the high school, and I also teach a couple of classes right next door in the Blue Lab at the, at the middle school. So normally you would have Mrs. Thompson here, but I'm also a DECA advisor, and she couldn't make the meeting tonight, so she wanted to kind of give, have me give you guys an update about what's going on and what's needed. As protocol, when we're taking students over state lines, we'll be going to Indianapolis. And just to give you some information on that, that would be for our, we call it CRLC, but it's a Central Region Leadership Conference. It takes place this year in Indianapolis. Last year it was in St. Louis. We'll be going from November 18th, which is a Friday, leaving fairly early in the morning and then getting back on Sunday somewhere around 3:00 or 4:00. This is not open to everybody in DECA. This is open to the leadership group and the interns. So I believe there'll be 21 students going. It's a fantastic group of kids will be going, and then Mrs. Thompson and myself. Some of the things that we'll be doing, the students will attend workshops regarding career exploration, DECA preparation, and topics such as business and industry trends. There's about, it's a, it's a great opportunity. I had an opportunity to go with the students to Lake Geneva last year. It's a great opportunity for the kids to network. I believe there could be as many as 2,500 students in that central region that'll be there. So we're very pleased to be taking our 21 with us. We'll be traveling with Oshkosh and McFarland to kind of defray the costs and to segue into costs, as the cost for the students is $285. DECA picked up $60 for each student, and that 285 includes the registration, transportation, and two nights of lodging, and DECA will pick up one meal for the students while we're being there. And because this is such a big trip and it's so important, we obviously, anytime we have overnights with our DECA students, we'll have a parent meeting, and I believe the parent meeting will take place, it's mandatory parents and, and students, and that'll take place on November 8th. So, and we just were looking for your support and your blessing to be able to take the kids to Indianapolis on the 18th. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, not as well as Mrs. Thompson, but I might be able to fight my way through it.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. One question.
Yeah, please.
What hotel are we staying in?
You know what? And I, I don't know. I know it's fairly close to Lucas Oil Stadium down that way in Indianapolis, but I'm not sure where that is.
But about 10 of them within three blocks.
I know, and I've been in Indianapolis, and it's a great city, so I think the kids are really looking forward to it, so. Sorry, I couldn't answer your question.
I've been in all, so.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. Have a great time.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Feel free to come back and let us know.
And we will let you know. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
7C, consideration of letter to Cardinal Hickory Creek Transmission Line. Steve?
Couple of weeks ago, members of our board participated in a subcommittee discussion about use of that land that the board owns along 18151. And as we were preparing for that meeting, thanks to a great partnership with our village, we learned that there's a proposed transmission line that's being created to run through the field that the board owns. And so that sidelined the topic that was originally at hand that day, and it was suggested that a letter be drafted for the board's consideration. And so that's what you see before you is, is an attempt at, at trying to capture the thoughts that I heard from the members of the board at that, at that evening, and if they were inclined to offer suggestions for improvement to the letter or potentially even take action to send the letter. I think Danny was there, and then, I'm sorry, I should remember who else was there. Thank you. And Jeff, maybe, perhaps he did like to speak to that?
I think it's really well written. I think it says everything it needs to say. I don't know that I would change anything.
Jeff?
I, I believe that from what the village and what Dennis Jilly had to say, that they were going to try to put the lines over the highway. Either way you look at it, with the surrounding footage needed of 100 feet, you're going to be imposing on our property on the north end of it, pretty close to the end of both those fields they want to put on there. So I'm just not too keen on that 100-foot. If they move it to the other side of the highway instead of the south side, I wouldn't be so bad about it. But we don't know what side of the highway they're going to put it on.
Is it the fault zone you're talking about, or is that?
Yeah, the fault zone.
What does that mean?
The electromagnetic field.
Fault zone, thank you. That's what they're saying, 100 feet on either, 100 feet total or 100 feet either side of the line?
Do you need some confirmation on that?
100 feet diameter.
Radius.
Diameter all around.
No, yeah, it's radius, so it's actually 200.
Oh, radius, so it is.
Yeah, it's 100 feet from the line on either side and up near, so. Needless to say, there are concerns about the health impact of that on anybody, let alone children.
I tried to note just a few studies that reflected that. I'm confident there's others. And I suspect that by approaching it from the perspective of that the board wants to just simply inform ATC that we assume that they didn't know that, and that it's board property, that hopefully they might be more receptive to reconsidering the pathway for that one.
I did a brief stint at ATC, actually. And my guess is that they know exactly who owns all of those properties. They are, have things pinned down pretty well on all of their routes. But I don't think that negates. I mean, I, I think you could use a different verb rather than we suspect, but I don't, I think that's, I'm splitting hairs. You, we want to get the message across, so. And the other comment I might make is that it says on behalf of our entire Board of Education, but we only have spots for four signatures. So I would sort of recommend that all of us sign it, or that just Diana, the president, signs it on behalf of the whole board. We're all equally important, I think.
I would, I would say all.
Yeah, I think we need to show a force.
Well, and I wonder, because this ATC isn't the final word, it has to go through
The Public Service Commission.
The Public Service Commission. I wonder if it might be valuable to send a letter to them as well, to, and is that something people do?
Or copy them on it.
I can add the copy, and then I'd be happy to add in all board members.
If they were to do what's requested here in the last paragraph to reconsider it so that it runs further south, whose property would that be, do we know?
There were two proposed pathways. And I think that's what you're referring to, correct? Is that there were two proposed pathways for the transmission line, and one of them ran further south than the one that they're proposing.
And it avoided the district's property.
And it avoided the district property.
It was significantly south of 18151. And then the other one also ran north, I want to say maybe through.
They'd have to bypass Door Lake with that one.
They would have to bypass it, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Well, which would also be good. Not that that's what we're discussing right here, but.
Okay, I think with Michelle's improvements, to add all the board members at the bottom, ATC's saying, committing that would be good. Does anybody else have any suggestions?
Do you need a motion specifically?
We do.
Is there, let me ask one more question. Is there anyone else we could or should be copying on this, like legislators or anybody like that?
Doesn't, doesn't hurt to, to add them.
It's just a question. I don't know.
Be happy to do that.
I don't know, what does everybody else think about that?
I can't hurt to give it to more people.
The more the better. I don't know who all the, the other stakeholders or players in the approval process would be in the commission.
I think it's mostly the Public Service Commission.
But it couldn't hurt.
Move to approve the letter with the noted changes.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Danny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. 7D, policy second reading, use of physical force, restraint, or corporal punishment by staff, policy 447.10.
Thank you again, board members. This is a policy that has been shared with our Safety and Wellness Committee. Some of the items that you see included in that policy revision are required changes from best practice and state directive. We do have available for us our Director of Student Services, Teresa Dany, if you have questions about what's being proposed.
Do you have questions?
I do. And it's on the, the language in the second sentence. Therefore, no official employee or agent of the Mount Horeberry School District school may subject.
Can I ask, which are you looking at, the?
447.1.
The policy.
The policy is out, where in the policy, the second?
Second sentence.
Second sentence. So it seems like there's an extra school in there. And it says, may subject a student enrolled in the school district to consequences that are prohibited, comma, to use of physical force, corporal punishment. And I don't understand why that's a, I don't, I don't understand that wording.
It's actually taken right out of, yeah.
The WASB?
No, it's taken right out of the Wisconsin State statutes that prohibit certain things from happening within the school. So it's, it basically says that no official employee or agent of the school district, of the Mount Horeberry School District, school actually, yeah, I forgot that one.
May subject a student enrolled in the school district to consequences that are to prohibit, that are prohibited.
To use physical or corporal punishment under Wisconsin State statute.
To use or to use of physical, that are prohibited. I don't, Kimberly, can you help with, with your editorial knowledge? Am, am I just looking at this wrong? And it may not, I'm probably splitting hairs again.
All I'm saying is if it was, it was copied and pasted from previous policy and that, yeah. We can clean it up. It doesn't have to be identical necessarily. So you can take out the word of and take out that second school after district. Yeah, the forensics are always interesting too, aren't they?
It does look like it was almost a list of things that we may not subject a student to. One is to consequences that are prohibited. The second one is to use of physical force or corporal punishment.
Mm-hmm.
And then it just kind of falls apart after that.
It is a little unclear.
I don't remember that from when we reviewed it before we got.
May I ask if the administration can pull this request for board's consideration and bring back to the board?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to 7E, first reading of public solicitations, promotions on school premises, policy 850.
This evening, I have one small suggestion to make to the policy noted. In my review of a couple of other policies, I noted there are some incongruence between this policy and the policies that you see referenced, cross-referenced at the bottom. And so I'm wanting to bring into alignment those policies. And it specifically relates to where approval should come from when one is asking for solicitation to the district. In our policies relate to conflicts of interest, fundraising, and advertising in the schools, it knows that the individual should come to the superintendent first. But in this policy, it says, please come to the Board of Education. And so we can make it either way. We would just bring the other policies to the board's attention if you so choose to have the board be the first party, or if you're okay with just adjusting this one to reflect the other policies. Appreciate it.
Does anybody have a strong feeling either way?
I think it would be easier to keep consistency if it were to one agent of the state.
Leah?
I agree.
Certainly, you always have the option if you're unsure or want guidance to bring it to us anyway.
Thank you for that, and definitely I would consider that.
So this is a first reading. With a roll call vote, we could pass it on the first reading, or we could bring it back the next time. We would need a motion or two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Michelle. To roll call vote, Danny?
Can I ask, can I ask another question?
Oh, absolutely. Sorry.
I just noticed in this one, as well as some of the others that you cited before, like 851, they mentioned pretty heavily the principle, the building principles. So who, how do we make sure that our principals are informed of, of all of these? And this isn't a new one, so I would assume they would be. But are we sure that those have been passed along to, to the building principals?
Thanks for asking that question. It's a really important one. What we typically do is we give our building principals all the changes that are approved by the board and the policy. But you may also remember that there were some administrative regulations that we instituted with this particular policy, of which the principals had a hand in crafting.
Thank you, Damon. So motion by Leah, seconded by Michelle. Further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So this policy passes? Thank you. 7F, consideration of replacement of high school AC unit number three.
The good news keeps on rolling when it comes to this project. I'm so excited to tell you that, yet again, being wonderful stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and the referendum that was passed a few years ago, we're now able to recommend to the board that every AC unit atop the high school can be approved. This, I think, means the fourth additional AC unit that we didn't anticipate, if I remember right. This will be a total of four more than we originally thought we were going to do. And so I'm so pleased to be recommending to the board tonight, and thanks again to David and to Scott for helping guide this process. There is a question of some timeliness with this. We can receive about a $40, $500 break in the price on this last unit, provided that the board would act before November 1st. So that's why we're asking for your thoughtful consideration of this recommendation tonight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Danny, seconded by Leah. Further discussion?
I want to send out another thank you to Dave, and Scott, and everybody involved. I believe originally, right, we thought this HVAC project couldn't be done, it was way over budget, but, and thanks to Danny, because I know your building, your building experience has been helpful, and the owner's representative, I think you've said, was key, and we'll be holding that in, in our memories for construction projects going forward.
And that will leave how much money left of that?
We believe there will be somewhere between the neighborhood of $10,000 and $20,000. We haven't received all the receipts yet, or the bills yet. But that would allow us to kind of take care of a few other odds and ends that are still in keeping with the question from the referendum.
Further questions, discussion? Okay, motion by Danny, seconded by Leah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 8A, citizens' comments. Brenda? Can you please state your name?
Yep, I wasn't sure. For those that may not know, I'm Brenda Monroe. I'm the village board liaison to the school. I just wanted to revisit the ATC topic for a second and share with you, we talked about this at our last meeting as well. I don't know if everybody was aware, or if anybody from the board was at your meeting where you had talked about it. But I think that we have an opportunity to maybe do a little bit of a partnership, because the village of Mount Horeb and the town of Springdale, I believe, are teaming up to try to convince them to choose an alternate route as well. And we're looking for volunteers from the community, this board. Ryan Zuzuski from our board is heading up that, that team committee, it's not a formal committee, but he's, he's taking the lead on all of that. And I think that your, your argument for changing the route is pretty compelling, and I think if we added that to what we are already trying to do from a village perspective, we may be able to bolster the, you know, numbers, have the numbers in.
So can we copy the board, the village board, as well as Springdale's powers that be on the letter?
And I think if, you know, in your, in your free time and really want that excitement, you could go and watch our last board meeting on the website to just hear the conversation that happened. We got a little bit of a presentation from them, and it's, it's an ongoing topic for us as well. So I just wanted to make sure that, as the liaison, that we're, that we're partnering and doing the best for not only the community, but the school as well, so.
Thank you. Other citizens' comments?
Quick question.
Sorry, where are citizens' comments?
I wanted to, I wanted to delineate something that she said. Okay, never mind.
Sorry.
I have one. I'd just like to respond back to Michelle's comment. As an MHEA leader, we would be more than happy to continue dialogue, conversation. We feel fortunate that our boards have continually kept us in the loop and a part of the relationship that's remained healthy, and we would very much welcome any kind of conversation with the board about staff morale or any other topics.
Thank you. Further citizens' comments? Seeing none, moving on to 9A, communication of the board meeting information to the community.
I'd like to suggest that we continue to keep our community abreast of the security and safety updates, the board's and administration efforts to promote staff morale. Of course, the great news with regard to the proposed levy, well, now approved levy, I should say. We want to celebrate our students who are heading to Indy. Thank you again. And then also the consideration of the replacement of that high school AC unit number three we thought might be important. Are there other items maybe that might be helpful?
When, it's right too soon. When is the appropriate time to announce kind of the finality of that project associated with that referendum? I don't know how you decide that. Is it when the money is spent, or when it, when the major projects are done?
We believe that we'll be able to have the AC units atop the high school. We won't actually test them until the springtime. So we can do that whenever you think is appropriate. I'd love to be able to sit down with the press at some point very soon and talk to them about a number of things that are going on, including the facility, study results, as well as other great news about this, and some other suggestions to put out the good work of our staff. So I'd be happy to do it multiple times, because it's a story worth telling.
I just think of all the discussions we've had about how it came in, well, I guess I'll say it came in under budget, which allowed us to do even more than we thought we would do. Would like to get that out, but I'm not sure what the formal timeline for that would be, if it's too soon to do that, or. You've kind of been doing that all along as you've been giving updates.
Maybe I can chat with a reporter who might be present in the room this evening after this meeting to see if that might work.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be fine.
So, anything else for the communication of board meeting information to the community? Okay, thank you, Steve. Future agenda items, does anybody have anything they'd like to bring for future agenda items?
I actually have a, I just thought of something about the communication, if you wouldn't mind going back.
Oh, to the, to the community?
To the community. I wondered if the board would like to communicate that we did have about our workshop on Saturday, and that we spoke about board and superintendent roles and some of those topics.
Good suggestion.
So that the, the district understands that the board is educating itself also.
And for future agendas, if I could have a minute, November 21st, to talk about the legislative update and pass out any figures that we have from the Stevens Point Conference. I'm sure that would be useful to all of you.
Absolutely. Just one minute? Should we time you? If I give you three?
Oh, thank you. Very generous.
No. Take as much time as you'd like. Anybody else have future agenda items they'd like to share? Okay, move the, moving on to 11, schedule of next meetings. Those are listed, I believe they are, I've reviewed them today, I believe they are correct. If anybody has any changes that they know of, let us know. Moving on to 12.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I guess I do this. We're adjourned. Thank you.